Sound well now? All right, sorry about that. Yeah, I don't think they were on. Uh, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Mr. Bratcher?
Here.
Mr. Everson?
Here.
Mr. Jenkins?
Present.
Mr. Corbin?
Here.
Mr. Flurry?
Here.
Mr. Lynch?
Here.
Mr. Bowman?
All right. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
All right. Motion by Councilman Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Flurry.
This one is mine.
And that's a unanimous approval. All right. Do you have any awards and recognition of distinguished guests by city council members? Anybody in the queue? All right. Seeing none. Let's see. Awards recognition of distinguished guests or communications from the may.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. We have several announcements. We are going to do the first one with Mr. Mark Snow, who is here from the Rotary Club of Shreveport. We're pleased to announce that this Rotary Club has decided to invest in our riverfront with $35,000 installation of three permanent screening umbrellas along with the necessary foundation near the fountain seating area in Riverview Plaza. We're truly grateful for such a nice gift for our community. And at this time, we're going to ask Mr. Snow if he will come and have some modification and clarification for the council so that you can see exactly what it is that they're going to do to enhance the beauty in our community. Mr. Snow?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Mark Snow. I'm with the Shreveport Club, the Shreveport Rotary Club of downtown. My address is 3003 Knight Street, Suite 120, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71105. Today, I'm pleased to present to the City of Shreveport on behalf of the Shreveport Rotary Club, three permanent umbrellas to be put in Riverview Park. We're doing this in honor of our 100th anniversary. The Rotary Club was founded in 1914. Last year, we celebrated our 100th anniversary, and we had several projects around the city, but this is the one we wanted to present to the City of Shreveport, which is donation of three, their PVC, 16-foot diameter, seven or nine-foot-high permanent umbrellas to go in the Riverview Park. And one reason why we're doing this is because we've kind of adopted the park with our use of the Dragon Boat races. We've had six Dragon Boat races that we have every September, and we bring hundreds of people from around the region to the park, and so we've kind of developed a relationship with the park. And one need we see when I drive by is I see a lot of mothers and fathers and caregivers when they're driving by the park, sitting out there in the hot sun, watching their kids play in the fountain. So what we saw needed, and it was recommended by city staff and Shelley Regal's group, that we're going to provide umbrellas for the seating for the caregivers for the umbrellas, I mean for the fountains. So with that, I just, if you have any questions, there's been a lot of people involved. The city staff, Shelley Regal and her staff have been very helpful. Kevin Bryan Architects was helpful. He's doing the Riverview Park right now and helped us with the idea. So with that, I'll, if you have any questions. If not, we are pleased to present this gift to you and hope you accept it.
Absolutely. Well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for choosing this as a way to commemorate the 100th anniversary. And, you know, what a fantastic gift it is to our community that is one of our, you know, that park, I think, was one that people said, "People aren't going to use it. They're not going to just go down there." And yet, if you drive by it often, or if you happen to be in the downtown area, you know that that park is always used by families and people from all across the city and region. It's a wonderful venue, and this is certainly a useful and aesthetically-nice-looking way to add some use to it, and just a wonderful gift. We thank you so much for that.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Snow. Okay, second announcement. I had the pledge of greeting guests recently at the Shreveport Bowser African-American Chamber of Commerce annual meeting. We look forward to working with the chamber to help with economic development in our city. Another announcement, I wanted to thank all of the City of Shreveport dedicated employees who worked through the current weather event to keep essential city operations functioning and our community safe, and especially some of those departments. The Streets and Drainage Division of Public Works has been working two 12-hour shifts that have provided citizens around the clock, 24-hour-day roadway coverage. These employees were involved in applying and mixing salts and sand to bridges, elevated roadways, and hills. Our Traffic Engineering Division has been monitoring bridges and elevated structures for conditions of ice and snow for the purposes of closing and barricading if conditions warrant. They've also been maintaining barricades and signals as necessary. The Police Department, from Monday through today, has responded to almost 800 calls for service. Of those, 77 were motor vehicle crashes, and 73 were assist motorists. On a positive note, no major catastrophic incidents were noted. The Fire Department has responded to 131 emergency events, including 26 motor vehicle collisions and one structure fire. Again, no major events. The Shreveport Airport Authority implemented emergency weather plans in keeping the airports active. Staff worked throughout Monday and straight into Tuesday to keep the primary runway open continuously for flights. To date, approximately four tons of runway ice melt were used along with plowing operations. And the Finance Department employed state late Monday to complete semi-monthly payroll. Currently, Sport Train will resume normal service tonight at 7:00 PM. And lastly, we want to say that we're making progress with bond projects, particularly with our parks. And this afternoon, Mrs. Shelley Regal with SPAR is here to give you an update and progress report on where we are with those projects. Ms. Regal?
Thank you, Mayor, City Councilman, Mr. Crawford. I'm happy to be here to give you an update on all the capital projects that are going on with SPAR that SPAR is managing. And I want to start with Proposition 2 and maybe give an overview of what Proposition 2 included, how those projects were selected, and where we are to date. Proposition 2 was a $38 million bond proposition. Included in that proposition was $26.2 million for SPAR projects, 10.8 for public safety, which included fire and police, and $1 million for the Finance Department. SPAR's role in these projects has been the administration of the money, the building projects, and all of their upgrades. The selection of these projects that were included in Proposition 2 were driven by three factors. Number one, SPAR had had a master plan done prior to the bond proposal, and that, citizens told us, "We don't really want anything new. We want you to fix up what you have." So that's one thing that drove the selection of the projects. The second thing was our agreement that we had signed with the Department of Justice for ADA requirements for the City of Shreveport. And last, it was deferred maintenance. If you look at most of the projects that were included in Proposition 2, it was because many of our public facilities had been lacked ongoing maintenance. Want to remind you that the public facilities, the included fire stations, are valued at about a half billion dollars. So this is a big part of our city's infrastructure. There are 34 projects included in Proposition 2. To date, 17 of those projects have been completed or on their way to being completed. In there, there was a project called Fire Station Renovation, and within those fire station renovations, there have been 12 smaller individual projects that include everything from roofs, generators, to mechanical system upgrades. The major accomplishments to date is the renovation of municipal auditorium, the property evidence room for the Shreveport Police Department, East Keegs Highway's resurfacing, Mamie Hicks' Recreation Center is currently in contracting and about to begin, Corby's Golf Course renovations, Southern Hills Tennis Center for all 10 courts have now been renovated and make it able to host tournaments not only locally, statewide, but also regionally. Our finance system upgrade is currently in the implementation process. Cross Lake Patrol Building has been completed and was opened in October of 2013. AC Steer Park restroom renovations, Huntington Park Golf Course renovations are complete. Oakland Cemetery, Jerry Tim Brooks renovations to the golf course are underway. And finally, the Southern Hills Tennis Center building is out for bid. Those projects that you heard that have been completed or that were started first, addressed first, we chose those based on our ADA needs, and those projects that were shovel-ready or easy to get shovel-ready. Upcoming projects that you'll soon see go out to bid or begin are Cargill Park renovations, CC Antoine Park renovations, the Valencia Recreation Center renovations, Billbury Park renovations, Hattie Perry Rec. Center, and then Fire Station 10 upgrades and renovations. I have asked Mr. Thompson to email you. There's a spreadsheet that you all should receive that will give you a spreadsheet of all the projects in Proposition 2, as well as other capital projects and capital projects that are coming out of our operating account. During the second sale, we will address all the remaining 17 projects, including Riverview Hall and Riverview Theater, Fire Station 14, Fire Station 17, and many smaller rec. center projects. On that spreadsheet, as I said, you will find other non-bond projects, such as the Intermodal Facility, the Shreveport Common, and the Stoner Avenue Dog Park. If you refer to the spreadsheet that will be sent to you, you will be able to see the progress of each of these projects. Finally, the last thing that I want to bring your attention to that I have asked Mr. Thompson to email to you is our 2014 year-end report for SPAR. That report will show you statistics from all of the events and activities, as well as numbers of people we served, either at stadiums, or rec. centers, or special events, parades. So I hope you take the time to look at that. I think it's some interesting statistical information on who's using our facilities and what facilities are being used. It also covers our free swimming lessons, pools, and other activities. So it's a very comprehensive report, year-end report for 2014. Also, the other thing that will be emailed to you or has been emailed to you is our first-quarter program guide. You will soon be receiving our second-quarter program guide, but in there, you will find all the activities and events that are taking place throughout the city. Everything from festivals to senior programming in our rec. centers. Anything that you want to do for fun, you will find that in that first-quarter program guide. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have about any projects, or anything else about SPAR you might have a question about, but I wanted to keep it as concise and to the point. So if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them. I think the spreadsheet, if you get an opportunity to open it, is very helpful, and it outlines all the projects, their budgets, and where we are in the stage of that project.
I don't know if anybody else is having an issue with this, but the 2014 year-end report, this year-end summary that you sent?
Mm-hmm.
Somehow, my computer's telling me that it's not, that the file is damaged or something of one of them, but that could be just this computer may have been found somewhere else.
And rescinded.
But anyway, I do have three questions that I see. Councilwoman Lynch, followed by Councilman Flurry, and then Councilman Corbin.
I just had one question, really, because I was reading and trying to listen to you at the same time. Did you say anything about Airport Park, Chris Hayes, or Hollywood Heights?
Chris, Airport Park is one of the ones that we should be going up for bid soon. We have been under design at that park, and they are in, if you look at that, they are in, we've had our public meetings, and they're in the design, conceptual design, design development phase, so that one will go out for bid quickly. Chris Hayes is a project that we'll design in-house. We will be doing that through our in-staff architect, and he has begun working on that project now. Could you ask me about a third one?
Hollywood Heights.
Hollywood Heights, we have not done any, we will begin public meetings at Hollywood Heights to talk about what they'd like to see with their money. We have a preliminary idea of what they would like to do there. We'll be meeting with them, with the community there, and their PAT group, which is their park advisory council. And that way, we can develop the conceptual plans for that park.
Okay. I think what I need to get with to kind of look at what we, where we are right now. Would that be you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, cool.
And we consider time for you to meet with us and the architect.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's see, I'm sorry, I've got Councilman Flurry now.
Mayor Tyler?
Yes, sir.
In regards to the SPAR council, vice, I'm not sure I understand the pecking order, but are all of those appointments filled so far by your administration?
No, sir, they are not.
And you intend to do that?
I do intend. I'm trying to get moms around a lot of those commissions and boards.
I think it's important that we get everybody involved in SPAR that wants to be involved, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
And Councilman Corbin?
Thank you, Shelley. Good report, and thank you for an easy-to-read update. I've already opened my email and see it, and that's very helpful.
Thank you.
One thing that I heard you say loud and clear is, when we started the 2011 bond process, the citizens said, "Don't build new stuff. Maintain what we have."
Yes, sir.
And from previous conversations we've had offline and even in chambers, I hope that you and Mayor Tyler will come back to us in the near future, and we can begin discussions about some facilities we have that we can no longer maintain, and what we need to do with those. So I look forward to those discussions soon.
Good. Thank you. I think the mayor has already given me some direction on that, and so we have been working on compiling a list of not only facilities, but green space. There are some places in our community that we have an abundance of green space that we might can do something different with. Okay? Thank you all, and thank you for the time.
Wait, I think we've got one more, Shelley.
I'm sorry.
Councilman Bowman?
Just one question. Anything on the Murphy Street part?
Land acquisition is the issue there. I know Malcolm and I have both been working on that, Malcolm way more than me, but there is a nonprofit group that owns a piece of property right in the middle of where they would like to develop the park. And until we can figure out how to, they're no longer in the business, that nonprofit is defunct, and it's hard, we're having a hard, so it's not adjudicated?
Right.
Because they owe taxes, and so we've been working to figure out how to get that piece of property. So that's really been the holdup with that park.
I had a park like that, or a piece of property acquisition, and let us think that was a similar situation, and that can be a time-consuming issue to rectify, because what happens is when a nonprofit owns land, and then they disband, but they don't, but there's not a new owner of that land, you basically have to bring that nonprofit's board back together to make a decision of how to disperse the land, as opposed to, and if it's privately held by somebody who does pay a tax debt on it, then eventually, it goes into adjudication, and you can acquire it through that method. But for an entity that doesn't owe taxes, it can be, you know, become sort of in a limbo of they've got to get a group to come back together to then release the land. So.
And there's a part that can't be cut out. It has to.
Right. This piece happens to be, and it happens to be the biggest piece of the park. We have talked to one member who was a member of that organization, and he said he would be willing, but he would have to have, it couldn't be just him. That was our advice. So hopefully, he can gather some more members of the organization, they can reform, and then just they can donate the property to the city. That's what we're hoping. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one other question, and I'm kind of going back to what Councilman Corbin said, asked. Have you all already started discussions? I guess identified any parks that feel you cannot continue to maintain?
I don't think it's that we, we, our resources for maintenance on parks is stretched very, very thin. One of the things that we have discussed over the last few years, and the mayor's off, the mayor and I and Mr. Crawford have been discussing is quality versus quantity. We are in a city that has an extraordinary amount of green space, spaces that have been dedicated as parks. If you think about some of them, there's one right off 70th Street, you wouldn't even know it. It's located underneath a water tower. How that became a park, we don't really know. And is that the best use of that piece of property? We have parks that are really remotely located that we can tell you that nobody's using. Would it be better to keep that as park space, or would it be better for us to deed that to the property owners around it and let them upkeep it, so that we can get to other parks that are highly used, like an airport park, a Ford Park, Southern Hills, David Rain? So we can get to those quicker and faster, so that we're doing maintenance there more often than, because what happens is we get on this rotation, especially for mowing, and it's anywhere from three to four weeks, because we're at 77 locations. And instead of being at 77 locations, would it be better to be at 50 locations every two weeks than 77? And that's the discussion we've been having. We outrank the national average for parks and green space, and that's the numbers we're putting together for the mayor and for Mr. Crawford about where we are and where we should be according to national averages. The one thing, when we as a staff look at it as a strength, we're very fortunate to own that much green space, because we're not having to purchase it, like many communities have to do. But on the other hand, are they in the right strategic locations for where our city's growing? Are these the places that our people are going? And those are the things we're trying to analyze at this point.
So you are doing it based on the 77 number?
Yes, ma'am. Master, and the master plan, using the master plan for Cato Bowser Parks Master Plan that we did together, we're basing that on the current city, Cato master plan, and we're also using our statistical information that you'll see in that year-end report to say, "Where are people going?" And also looking when we're in that mowing rotation, how often are these parks being used? So we're using all of that to analyze what's best for, as we move forward.
I just want to make sure, at least for, let me say District F, that I kind of know what's going on, especially the parks that are in my district.
Yes, ma'am.
Where you all commit anything to paper.
That's right.
For it's down and signed off on, and, you know, things are in place.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to make sure I'm aware of what, kind of what you're thinking if there are some parks that are in District F that may be affected.
And what we had, when the mayor and I had an opportunity, and Mr. Crawford had an opportunity to meet, one of the things that we said is, "We'd like to put this information together and then have a committee that would then help us look at this for what's best." We don't always know what's best just at SPAR. That's why we rely heavily on each, Recreation Center has a park advisory council. We rely on them. We rely on you as city council members from each district and, you know, other users of our parks to help us make those decisions. Those would not be made, especially at, you know, the staff level. Okay? Thank you.
And I've got Councilman Flurry now.
I won't bring up Heine and Beetle and Festation and, because I-
You just did.
Yeah. Well, but what this city needs is a better communication to the citizens in SPAR, fire, weather. I mean, I would, if I had my druthers, the Fire Department would be sending out weather alerts, what we got going on there. The Cedar Park, Texas, government puts it out every time they have a tornado or in what bad weather. So I still say that when we get better communications to the citizens, we're going to be able to let them know, "We got a basketball game going that was canceled. I saw that. I wanted to go and attend that." But once that kind of gets streamlined and cleaned up, we'll see, people know what's going on in SPAR. But thank you for everything you do, Shelley. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Thanks for your support.
Thank you very much, Shelley. And I know you and I have talked with interest about the same topic. I mean, I think the City of Shreveport, I read a study a few years back about parkland per thousand people in a community, and we are so far off the chart. We have about 145 acres per thousand people, and this is giving us a total of about 29,000 acres. For us to be average for, you know, a community our size, we have about 1,500 acres, and we have 29,000. So we are, we have a considerable amount of green space, and I just want to thank you all for that. I know that you get complaints, and I know that you get people who are never perfectly satisfied, but for the resources that you have, maintaining that amount of property and doing it to the quality that it is done, and not only maintaining it, but programming it, I would, I would say, you know, I'm actually very, very proud of the Parks Department in our city and the recreation that we're able to offer, everything from specialized programs, things like the Special Needs Program at Princess Park. I mean, that's not something every community can offer. That's a, you know, that's really something we should be proud of. So thank you all for all the work that you do, and this is a great update, a lot of really useful information as we make decisions going forward.
Thank you. And I just want to say, thank you for that compliment, but it really is a testament to the hard work that the men and women at SPAR do every day. They are, I think we've had this conversation about how dedicated they are, from the guy who's, you know, weeding a park all the way to the person who's programming that therapeutic program, they all, their hearts are in it. They do it because they have passion for what they do. So I appreciate that you recognize that. Thanks. And thank you all for the opportunity.
And Ford Park looked great on national television last night.
It did.
We were very proud to see it on there.
Sure did.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you, Shelley.
Okay.
And that concludes our announcements and reports.
Thank you very much. Let's see, does any member of the council have any questions for property standards? Seeing none. Let's see, I think, do we have a master plan committee report today?
Yeah.
And if everybody would notice, I think this may be part of the report. You would have forgotten to buy it today.
You would have?
Well, maybe just, no, actually, I'm sorry, just those members of us who are on the master plan committee. My apologies. I'm getting everyone excited. They're going to get their own copy of the, you will eventually, but I think this is an early review.
I was going to cue Stephanie in being a thief.
Sorry to get everyone's hopes up for that bit of light reading that is the UDC.
If you lift that up, Jeff, just to show everybody with a size of, this is the second draft of the UDC, and Councilman Bowman also has a copy. And we are just, just to remind everyone what we're doing on the 26th and 27th of February, which is Thursday and Friday of this week, we have invited our consultants, Camero's, to come in and do a presentation and overview of this second draft to the Metropolitan Planning Commission Board, the CBA, as well as to the mayor and Brian Crawford, as well as to the master plan committee and the parish administrators, as well as other designated staff. The intent of this is, again, to try to put a circle around the internal review of the proposed UDC. It's got a lot of moving parts, it's a lot of in-depth reading, but we have vetted this quite a lot through the departments, both on the parish and the city side, in trying to get to a document we think is workable and progressive. And the intent is that if we feel as though we're all pretty much on the same page, then we'll go to the next step, which will be the public outreach, hopefully in March, where we'll have a series of open houses inviting the public to come in and review and ask questions and make recommendations, as well as do targeted presentations to neighborhood association groups, business groups, civic organizations, to get their specific input. We're going to do an extremely, we're going to spread an extremely wide net, trying to get all the information we need, so that we can move this thing forward, hopefully for your consideration in the very near future for final approval. And any questions that you might have this time?
Questions anymore?
Is this meeting open to the public in person?
This meeting is the internal review. It's actually by invitation, which is the two council members and the individuals from the parish commission that will attend this meeting. The intent of this is to stay internal. Once that is done, then we will bring it out to the public and get their input.
But when, but yeah, with, again, with the goal of establishing several public meetings to get input. And I know that there are probably a lot of new- And I know that there are probably a lot of new, new people to the discussion of Unified Development Code, so, you know, I think maybe it would be appropriate after we get a chance to do this review in the next few days, maybe we can schedule some time to kind of sit down with the new council members and...
Absolutely.
I assume you all have already had the opportunity to sit down with Mayor Tyler, but, but it may be helpful to get some of the new council members a little bit of a background as to what the UDC is and what all it entails so that they can help to facilitate the, the people in their districts to participate in the upcoming meetings because I know we'll all benefit from, from having a good understanding of.
Absolutely. And one of the things I want to do, and I want to clarify this, is that when we do the outreach, we're not going to do it here. We're going to go out to the communities, to places where people can come easily, and we're going to have several of these meetings. So we're wanting to go to where the people are and not stay behind these walls, so to speak. The other thing too is, one of the things I've spoken with Art about is that I would like to set aside a, what I call an orientation overview of not only the UDC but about the MPC itself with the city council members. And at some point in time in the very near future, I'll invite you guys to come to my office and we'll sit and have lunch and we'll talk about all the things the MPC does and the things we hope to do. And I think that will target exactly what you're asking for, Jeff.
Absolutely.
So that everyone will understand what, who does what, how and why. And so we're going to do that, we hope to do that very soon and we'll all get back with you on that.
That'd be great. Thank you so much, Mark, I appreciate it. And seeing no other questions, we'll move on.
Thank you.
Let's see, next I think we have a public hearing, there's no public hearing today, so we'll move on to adding items to the agenda. Mr. Thompson, is there any legislation to be added today?
We have one item, Mr. Chairman, it's a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the second amended and restated Medicaid supplemental cooperative endeavor agreement with the Louisiana Ambulance Alliance and other public entities and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Okay.
That's a mouthful.
It is.
I'm sure it's much more straightforward when we read about it, right?
Something you did last year, I believe.
Was it for the EMS?
Yes.
To be able to do the billing and to be able to coordinate the billing and the refunding?
Copy. And, let's see, that's not, that's not hyperlink, is it? Okay, yeah. Because we just got, that's new, right?
Is it on there or do we need to refresh or something?
It's on there, but it's not hyperlink, it doesn't show up as hyperlink.
Let's see, I'm not seeing it.
I'll refresh it. You might have to refresh.
Mr. Chairman, I could provide a little bit of information because I submitted this, Mr. Crawford's aware of it too. This is the agreement that the city previously entered into and this is just to authorize the mayor to extend it for one year. This is the one where we make an intergovernmental payment and the state uses it as matching funds to provide to the federal government and then we end up getting supplemental payments for ambulance services.
Great. Okay, well, that being said, do we have anybody that would like to speak in favor of adding this item to the agenda? Anybody that would like to speak against adding this item to the agenda?
Somebody, Dan.
I've got a motion from Councilman Corbin to add, seconded by Councilman Jenkins. And then I have a, I have a piece of equipment for this following part up here. So, let's see, if we could vote and then, once we vote, Councilwoman Lynch had a question.
Because I'm not going to be able to vote for this if I don't.
Oh, to add to the agenda, I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
I guess I'm really just trying to understand, maybe I'll just have to trust you all.
Trust. But let me say one other thing about this program, if I remember correctly. We front, we receive all of our money back and then more money back.
We do.
And it's, and it's a, I mean, I'll say it in the simplest terms, it appears that we sort of front the money for the state and then the federal government reimburses us and the state and then there's additional money that's also given at some factor of, I don't remember what the payment factor is.
Correct. It, Councilman, it allows us to leverage our dollars that we already charge for Medicare and Medicaid reimbursement with the state so they can bill in a, a larger amount where they get an increased reimbursement rate than what we would normally get. And it'll come back at about a, almost a two to one. So if we put up a million dollars, we almost get a two million back on that. So we get our million back and then another million on top of that. It's already in the budget, it's already budgeted for in the fire department's budget as well.
Okay, that was my, my other question. So the money is put into the fire department's budget?
The revenue is shown in the fire department's budget.
That's it, the extra billion dollars.
But it's not necessarily extra because I think we've already budgeted for this to happen.
That's correct.
Yeah, so this is, this is following along with our current budget.
What I'm saying, the two, the, the two to one, we put out a million, we get two back.
Mm-hmm. And it comes into the...
I think it's like a million.
Charles can...
We give, we put up forty-four percent of the gross amount and then we get back as revenue, the full amount. So in the two years we've participated in it, we've received almost two million, almost two-point-nine million dollars worth of revenue we would not have received if we had not participated in the program.
Hey, and so where did that two-point-nine million dollars go? I'm trying to find some money.
There is presently a million dollars budgeted in the fire department's budget. That money, we give it basically depending on what our numbers are. We send the state between anywhere a hundred and fifty to about two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars a month or a quarter. Ten days later, we get the money we sent plus an additional amount back that is recorded as revenue in the fire department. So all this money is already budgeted, the expense and the revenue in the fire department's budget. This is not any new money that has not already been budgeted.
So the entire amount, the entire amount is in the fire department's budget?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Y'all keep saying we don't have no money. We got a lot of money.
Yeah, that just doesn't mean we don't spend. And if we're spending it, nobody's going to say that there isn't a lot of money coming in.
This money does not offset the cost of the EMS.
That was a unanimous passage to add to the agenda. Let's see, in public comments, I only have one public comment and that is Mr. George Ricardo? Yes? Please, if you could just state your name and address for the record and Mr. Ricardo is speaking on Resolution Number Twenty-Eight.
Yes, Resolution, I'm George Ricardo, I live in Keithville. You need the street address?
Um, yeah.
Six to four eleven Bain Boulevard in Keithville. Thank you. Council, I thank you for having me here. Before I got here, I went to the office and each of you should see I have a picture of the Moose Lodge and their horseshoe pitch. It should be in front of you.
Yep.
Okay.
Do you have it?
All right. My concern is on this resolution that they proposed is they're, they're in violation of their zoning ordinance. They built these pits illegally without any approval, without any regards to safety, without any regards to parking or the dumpster placement, any of those, all those features should have been included in the construction of this, these horseshoe pits. They've allowed, they have been allowing alcohol to be consumed outside this building. They even had the bartender at one time serving alcohol outside this building. It took the authorities from Baton Rouge to come up and inform them that they cannot be selling it outside and that's what they were doing, they were selling it because I was pitching there and the bartender would come out and he'd bring us our drinks. And then the Shreveport V-Squad has been out there on several, I'm going to say several, three or four occasions to inform them that they cannot be drinking outside their building. This organization clearly does not care about obeying the laws of its community. They, they built these pits without regard to approval and yet they did get approval from the National Horseshoe Pitchers Association because they have events out there, they have fifty events a year, fifty horseshoe pitching events going on out there a year. They come before this committee, apply for, to consume alcohol outside their building on five events or six events. In the past, it's five, I think this year it may be seven events. They don't ask to have the event. I've checked with the other organizations that put on events, even the city itself puts on events, they specify in there that the event's going to be outside and in violation one-oh-six, one-thirty, paragraph six, I think, is where every use must be inside in a closed structure. See, they're not even asking for that. This committee has granted them on two occasions permission to consume alcohol outside during the event, but they have yet to ask to have the event outside. So that right, that right there tells you they're violating their zoning. There's fines involved with this for the alcohol, alcohol beverage, losing a gaming and I'm sure the occupation permit, I'm sure there's a fine for violation of that. I think I read that your alcohol license, you agreed to abide by the ordinances of the district in which you're in, they're not doing that. The losing a gaming, they agreed to abide by the ordinances of the district in which they're in, they're not doing that.
We've, we've run out of time, does anybody want to make a...
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ricardo, this allegation that you're making about V-Squad, do you have anything in writing that that is correct?
From the V-Squad?
Yes. You say the V-Squad, how do you know that?
I've talked to them.
Talked to who, sir?
At first I talked to Sergeant Andrews, he's not there anymore. The other officer I talked to, I can't recall his name off the top of my head.
Is anyone from the police department here that I can ask to clarify that? Is one of the assistant chiefs here? Sir, do you know anything, does this be factual, that the V-Squad has been to the Moose?
Sir, you need to come up?
You have to come up to the mic.
I'm the chief.
You got it.
Chiefs, all, this gentleman here alleges that the Moose Club, V-Squad has been out to their place there on numerous occasions about drinking. Are you, do you have anything that you can...
Yeah, we've, we've been out there on occasions in the past. It's the ABO officer, which would have been Russell Collins, the GL guy that I'm familiar with. And, and it was basically because they were drinking outside. And I think what they're trying to do today is to get permission to do it legally. We went by and turned and stopped doing it and it was stopped, so now it's the legal way to do it is to get you guys permission.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Yes, that's, that's why they, that's why they've been making these resolution proposals, is so they can drink outside. They know, they know that, they know it's against the law, but yet they came here in thirteen and got permission, went back to their lodge and, and the league in two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and fourteen continued on and they continued to drink alcohol out there until this year. I think it was, I mean, until two thousand and fourteen, summertime in the summer of two thousand and fourteen, I think the point was finally made to them after a few visits that you cannot drink out there. These people are hard-headed.
Okay.
But the issue here is they built these pits without permission.
Yeah.
They're unsafe without, regards to safety, without regards to parking. Actually, there's fines involved, it's owed to the alcohol beverage people and, and the gaming commission.
Councilman Jenkins.
I mean, I do appreciate good Samaritans, but I'm a little perplexed on why somebody from Keithville is in front of us here at the city council to object to this. And maybe I've missed the overarching driver here, but, but I think that needs to be at least pointed out to us.
Let me explain that to you. I was a member for a long time, ten or twelve years. When I first joined, I asked them, well, I was playing horseshoes at the United Auto Workers Union Hall, which is down the street. We were playing horseshoes there and some gentlemen started, started this horseshoe league up at the Moose. They told me I had to join the Moose in order to participate up there. Horseshoes is a great sport, I enjoy it. As a matter of fact, did I take a minute here?
Well, we're, we're somewhat...
I wanted to show you, I wanted to show you a horseshoe.
Well, I think we... And, and I'm not...
This is what can be thrown from forty feet. This can hurt, this can hurt and kill a kid, an adult. That's what's been going on. Anyway, they, when I found out that it was against the law to drink out there, I dropped my membership right away.
Okay.
That, that's why I was...
I, I move that we get back to the business of the day. I think we've heard from the gentleman and I think we have understanding of his concern.
I think so, thank you. Thank you for sharing your concern.
Okay, great.
Okay, let's see. That's all we have for public comments. Now we move on to confirmations and appointments. We have the following executive appointments for consideration today. Mr. Thompson, please continue.
We have the city attorney, William C. Bradford Jr., the deputy city attorney, Julie Glass, and Zelda Tucker. You want to take those separately or you...
Yes. Councilman Bradford. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a couple of remarks before we vote. I want to make these remarks acknowledging that we are only six days into our term, that we, I think the administration as well as the council are not totally familiar with each other. I think once we continue to get familiar with each other in bond, I think we would have a better understanding of our philosophy and how we arrive to certain decisions. Like I told you before, Mr. Chairman, that my whole entire career has been in the private sector. And in the private sector, from my experiences, that when we seek persons to fulfill positions, we would always seek the best qualified candidates. I have some serious reservations with the restructuring of the city attorney's office to accommodate, well, any, 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 any department. I think we have to be careful because it sets a bad precedent when we start, we start restructuring to accommodate weaknesses of individuals. I've, I've looked at the, this rearrangement and the persons that are being offered and I, I think they are great people. I think they are absolutely great people. I think William Bradford is a wonderful young man, I think he has great potential. But I have, do have some serious reservations regarding this rearrangement and the positions in which they have been described and how they will work in that, in this new arrangements. So I'm just not comfortable with, with, with this point, these appointments, Mr. Chairman. And I just wanted to make that expression and hopefully that we would also just consider the precedent that, that this may be setting, you know, we've, the structure of the city council, I mean, the city attorney's office has been somewhat stable for years and years. And I just feel that we can, we can maintain the structure and, and just have better qualified individuals doing the job that we are anticipating doing. This is a great, great, great responsibility, city attorney's office, the city attorney is a great responsibility. And I just think that, again, a fine young man, very bright, but as relates to his resume that which I reviewed over and over again, it was a tough, I looked at it, I looked at other cities, I looked at the qualifications and the, and the experiences of, of city attorneys throughout the, throughout this, in the United States and it gives a minimum basis of qualification and experience and I, and I, and Mr. Bradford just doesn't meet that minimum, that minimum criteria that, so I'm just, I'm just saying that I, I, I emailed the mayor, let her know that I wasn't going to be able to support this rearrangement as well as this appointment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lynch, followed by Councilman Flurry after that.
I'll make a motion to confirm William C. Bradford Jr., city attorney, Julie Glass and Zelda Tucker as deputy city attorney.
A second.
I second.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a substitute motion that we postpone confirmation of city attorney and the two deputy city attorneys for two weeks. You and I had a conversation with Mayor Tyler last week, and Mayor Tyler agreed to reach out and share additional information about the restructuring with small groups of council people. And I want to allow time for that and to be sure that any questions that council members have are asked. So I'd ask, I would offer a substitute motion that we postpone this for two weeks.
Second.
Okay. We have got a motion on the floor right now to postpone. The motion is by Councilman Corbin, seconded by Councilman Bradford. And we still need a vote from Councilman Bowman.
Please send the key.
Votes, okay. The motion to postpone passes. Four to three.
I pushed the wrong button.
He pushed the wrong button, did.
I pushed the wrong button, sorry.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. How do we, how do we address if somebody?
Let's change it. Ask them, because I pushed it on.
We can just go back and put?
Yeah.
He can change it now.
He says he was on the prevailing side. He can make a motion to reconsider.
Make a motion to reconsider.
Second.
Okay. So now we have a motion to reconsider.
So everybody who wants to reconsider would vote yes.
So if you would like to cast the votes again.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Point of order. Attorney, as relates to reconsidering, isn't it that the ones who was on the prevailing side would have the second motion also?
I think it's just a motion, a motion by the person, by a person on the prevailing side. Well, I'd have to look that up. We don't have a second person on the prevailing side?
Listen, I will second it because I'm not going to let us get worked in in some kind of a structural deal. Because if it was honest mistake on his part, I'm not going to use that as a criteria. So I will second his motion.
Okay. So we've got a motion to reconsider by Councilman Bowman, seconded by Councilman Jenkins. You would vote yes if you would like to vote again so that we can take an accurate vote.
Now, it seems as though we are confused here. This is pretty good stuff.
So there just was a vote, and this vote looks like it's a vote to not reconsider is what has just passed.
You sure?
That's where.
I haven't voted, though. This didn't come up. That's the vote from before.
It isn't the vote from before.
No, I didn't even punch the thing, though. That's what I'm saying. It's got to be the.
It can't be the vote from before, because my vote has changed.
Yeah.
Y'all reported a vote from there. I didn't even punch it.
I should have voted yes.
Mr. Flurry was saying.
I can't now. Got to reconsider. I asked to reconsider.
Okay. So now, Councilman Flurry, are you making that motion? Councilman Flurry has made a motion to reconsider the vote to reconsider. So let, and there is a second on that motion.
That was me.
Seconded by Councilman Bowman. Let me be very clear this time.
He can't second it.
He can't second it. We didn't get an answer on that, if that is the case or not.
Okay, yes.
Grow another life line out there. Seconded by Councilman Jenkins now. And let's be very clear on this. If you vote yes to this, then you are saying that you would like to go back to that first vote and allow for anyone who may have pushed the wrong button to push the correct button.
Okay.
So you would vote yes if you want to redo the original vote.
Wait, she needs to clear it first.
She's got to clear it first.
She's got to clear it first.
Okay, so this is a vote to reconsider at this point.
Right. There you go.
Reconsider the original, please.
Mr. Flurry and Mr. Bowman.
We want to make sure we push the right button.
If you want to reconsider the vote, you would vote yes.
I want to support her vote. One of Lynch's, I'm trying.
Okay, this is yes.
Oppose the.
No, this hasn't said what they voted yes. So you would vote yes.
I'm not sure we should be up here telling people how they need to vote on something. I mean, we already have made two votes and can't seem to get a consensus.
Just vote it. We're still waiting on votes from Councilman Flurry and Bowman. Okay. Now we've got, we have approved the motion to reconsider. So now, what motion is now there? Is it a substitute motion or?
Do I need to make that again? Or do we just go back and?
Yeah, when you vote to reconsider.
Then offer the substitute motion to postpone for two weeks.
Okay.
Second.
This is a motion to postpone for two weeks.
At least we've learned how to vote.
Okay. So that motion does not pass.
So we go to the original motion.
So now the, so do we go back to the original motion now?
Back to the original motion to.
Which is to confirm the three appointees. Okay. So now we have a motion by Councilwoman Lynch, seconded by Councilman Flurry, to confirm the three appointments under the city attorney's office. That's what we're voting on now. And that is a five to two approval of those appointments.
Mr. Chairman, we now have two appointments to the Shreve Memorial Library Board, Hope J. Batts and Sharon L. Hicks.
So moved by the chair to.
Shannon Hicks.
To approve Shannon Hicks and Hope Batts for the Shreve Memorial Library Board.
Second.
It's a motion by the chair, seconded by Councilman Corbin, for the approval of Hope Batts and Shannon Hicks. All votes are in. That's unanimous approval. And.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to appoint, reappoint Dolores Lynch to the library board and Julia DeHagan.
Second.
Okay. So we've got a motion from Councilwoman Lynch to suspend the rules to allow for the appointment of the other two library board members, Dolores Lynch and Julia DeHagan. And that was seconded by Councilman Flurry. And that's unanimously approved.
Okay, so now we have to do a motion.
Yeah. So that's where we are now. The only other appointment that, appointment letter that I believe we've received is for the fire chief.
That's what he's saying.
Yeah. So we've received the appointment letter for the fire chief, but it is not ready for confirmation unless somebody wants to suspend the rules. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I believe that that would take a unanimous vote to add it to the agenda.
Correct.
Okay.
Chairman, I move that we add confirmation of the fire chief to the agenda.
I'll second that. This is to add it to the agenda.
I have a request to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. In fact, during that back and forth over the last thing, I think we have a couple of requests to speak. Councilman Flurry, was yours addressed already? Councilman Bowman, was yours addressed already?
He didn't, no, yes, sir.
Okay. And Councilman Jenkins?
Okay. Listen, I'm 100% supportive of his candidacy. I do believe that this two-week period is in there for a reason, and particularly with appointments of this magnitude and how they impact the city. And I do think that the public should be afforded the opportunity to either come forward with issues in this regard or not, or whatever is out there. And I do think a public vetting of an appointment is appropriate for one of this magnitude. So since this is adding something to agenda, it only takes one person to refuse, and so I'm going to make that vote. But I want to make clear that this has nothing to do with my confidence. And that gentleman out there, I think he's a great candidate. But I think we do a little bit of a disservice to the city if we don't allow an appointment of this magnitude to be across the city. And I remember with Bryan, in fact, right, there was some discussion of that at one point in the, and we all thought that it was worthwhile to use that full two-week period, and I don't think this should be any different. So that's, that's why I'm going to exercise that right in this particular case.
In lieu of remarks by Councilman, I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Do we? We can just withdraw the motion now and cancel the vote, right? Yeah. So anybody who's may have registered to vote, we can cancel it. Okay. So I think that brings us to consent agenda legislation. Unless, was there anything I overlooked?
No, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we initially talked about consent agenda legislation. We talked about the possibility of making one motion to introduce everything that's on the consent agenda. After further discussions with Ms. Glass, there is an issue there that we need to resolve. So what I would propose is that I will read the items on the consent agenda into the record, and then there could be one motion to adopt or to whatever it happens to be those items after they are read. But for this meeting, I would ask that we would be allowed to read it into the record.
Oh, absolutely.
Resolution number thirty authorizes the acceptance of a donation from the Rotary Club of Shreveport. Resolution thirty-one adopts the survey, system survey and compliance questionnaire required by the Legislative Auditor's Office of the State of Louisiana. So if we could do those, motion to introduce those two items.
No, it was an accident. I'm sorry, you was asking me a question as you said that. You're looking for a motion to.
To introduce those two items.
I move.
Second. Motion by Councilman Bradford, second by Councilman Jenkins, to adopt or to introduce. And that's unanimous.
We are now under ordinances that can be introduced. Number sixteen, amends chapter 106 of the code by resorting property located on the east side of Vicar Drive of approximately 760 feet north of East Holly, to change it from R1H, Urban One Family Residence District, to B1 Buffer District. Ordinance number seventeen, amends chapter 106 by resorting property located on the south side of Bert Koons Industrial Loop, 1,580 feet east of Kingston Road, from B2E Neighborhood Business Extended Use District to B3 Community Business District. Ordinance number eighteen, amends chapter 106 by resorting property located on the south side of Malzian Road, 1,225 feet west of Linwood Avenue, from B2E Neighborhood Business Extended Use District to I1 Light Industry District. And ordinance number nineteen, amends chapter 106 by resorting property located on the north side of Southern Trace Parkway, 775 feet east of Wallace Lake Road, from R1 Residence Agricultural District to R1D PUD, Urban One Family Residence Plan Unit Development District.
Send me up for introduction.
Second.
Motion by the chair, second by Councilman Jenkins. We'll cast your votes. And that's unanimous.
The following resolutions are on the consent agenda for adoption, and I will read all of those into the record. Resolution number twenty-three, suspends certain provisions of chapter 10 relative to alcoholic beverages and chapter 106 relative to zoning for property located at 6425 Yuri Drive for the United Title of Louisiana Customer Appreciation Day on May the 7th, 2015, with a rain day being May the 14th, 2015. Resolution twenty-four supports the efforts of the Brotherhood of Locomotive Engineers and Trainsmen to require crews with a minimum of two people on railroad freight trains. Resolution twenty-five authorizes the mayor to dedicate the 1,700 block of Nash Street in honor of the Reverend Alvin L. Jackson. Resolution twenty-six suspends the effects of certain provisions of chapter 10 and chapter 106 of the code relative to 2245 Grimmett Drive. And resolution twenty-seven suspends the effects of certain provisions of chapter 10 and chapter 106 of the code relative to the St. Patty pub crawl on March the 17th, 2015, and otherwise provides with respect there too.
I'm going to make a point of order first, just that typically we would have a work session the day before. Yesterday's was canceled. So I do want to take this opportunity. Some of these are going to be, if it's a one-reader, it may be the first time some of us are seeing this. So I know I have a couple I'd be happy to get a little background on. But, you know, and keep in mind that since this is also a new way of using the consent agenda, so we can remove items from a consent agenda for separate consideration if people would like. But I will say with regard to resolution twenty-four, that is a resolution that came to my attention that some of the railroad operators are wanting to reduce the number of people on a rail crew to one. And being the high number of rail traffic that we have, the high degree of rail traffic that we have through our city, I feel it's in the best public interest to have more than one individual if somebody falls asleep or becomes incapacitated in some way. It's good to have a backup on there to be able to watch out for public safety. And so that is our resolution expressing that we would like for them to keep two people on their railroad crews. The resolution twenty-six pertains to a business that is located in Councilman Bradford's district, and we had a chance to talk about that. It is similar in nature to the situation that happened at Piermont Oaks last year. A change in ownership with the same use, but there was a zoning notification difference, so we're suspending the rules to allow for that notification to take place. And then the other one that I had on there is a pub crawl. This is something that we've done in the past, and this is the same as it's been in past years. So I have a request from Councilman Jenkins and then Councilwoman Lynch.
Okay. I would like to move to remove resolution twenty-four from the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Because I have a lot of questions about it, and if it's on the consent agenda, it's my understanding of the consent agenda that I should put it into a different part of the.
Correct.
Yeah. I mean, that's what I'm thinking that I'm supposed to do, but if I'm doing this incorrectly.
You're doing it correctly.
That's my, that's my plan. So, but I need a clear screen to do it or something.
Seconded by Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Corbin. Motion by Councilman Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Corbin. So that's a five to one. The motion passes. Okay. And Councilwoman.
By the way, let me just ask, since this is a little bit, if anybody makes a motion to take it up, do we need unanimous? What is, I mean.
We're looking right now. We're thinking that, too.
It kind of against the whole point if somebody has to agree to it.
I think that's probably correct.
Okay. So, sorry about that. But that is really a technical issue. I mean, it's no substantive at this point, but. I mean, it's no substantive at this point, but-
Councilwoman Lynch.
Does that mean if it's on consent, you can't ask a question yet?
No, you can. I mean, right now, we're in the point of questions right now. I mean, there's no motion on the table for these yet.
I just had a question on Resolution 25. On these street dedications, and I have quite a few in my district, do we notify, is there some type of notice to the people that are on the street or within a certain area of the street, or is it just based on council action?
I'm sorry. It's hard for me to hear.
This is, she's asking a question about street dedication.
On street dedications, is there some form of notice to people that may live on the street or within a certain region of it?
No, we do not.
Is it just council notice?
Name change.
Oh, I understand. It's just a dedication.
We do not notify the people who are on the street. There is no notification.
Okay. But that's something that would fall under MPC if we wanted to look at that?
No.
Some type of notice, providing some type of notice?
No, the council could put that in its rules if it wanted to.
Okay. I guess what I wanted to make sure is if there's something, not necessarily on this one, I'm just using this one to ask my questions, because I've gotten a request to do this on one. But, so, I guess other than the notice that we put for our agenda, how would, if there's somebody or people that live on the street that may object, how would they get that information that this is actually under consideration? Is it just the published agenda?
That's the only way.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Bradford.
I could appreciate the remarks by the chair lady, I mean, the council lady, because I could see in some instances where if it's a big street with a huge residency, that there could be some opponents to that happening. But I want you to know that in this instance, Nash Street, where Reverend Alvin Jackson had passed it for 35 years, the members, along with the pastor Hunter, did poll the residents in that area. It's not very many, and they had no problem with that. So, but I can understand procedure that was mentioned. Could be a problem if anybody didn't agree with it somewhere. And that's maybe something we can consider for this council to proceed.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt 23, 25, 26, and 27.
Second. That is a motion from Councilman Corbin, second by the Chair, and we have unanimous approval.
Mr. Chairman, I guess we should now take up Resolution number 24.
Resolution number 24. I will make a motion to adopt Resolution number 24.
Second.
And then Councilman Jenkins, I believe, has a question.
Okay. Now, had we had this over a longer period of time, I probably would be a little bit better prepared for this. I'm the first one to admit I know absolutely nothing about trains, nor do I know about how many people should be in a different part of a train at certain times. I am also reluctant to pass some type of resolution on this where, I'm not sure we're hearing both sides of the story, if we are indeed hearing something from the actual train companies. And maybe that's who this is from. I'm having a little trouble that if I was running the train company, I'm not sure why I think the city council would be going and making resolutions on how I run my operation unless there's some subject expertise, either from DOTD or somebody in the city's department that monitors that, that says, hey, I think this is a safety issue, whether it's fire and police. It just seems a reach of what we're responsible to do here in city council. As far as that, I don't think I'd make a motion on how many nurses are in the operating room at Willis Night. I mean, that is not, that is not my role. Do I think more nurses in there might be better? Sure, but I don't have any material way to judge that, and I'm very concerned about what I see as a little reach unless there's a lot more to the story and that somebody in public safety is coming forward with this proposal. So, I would recommend that we vote this down, or at a minimum postpone this until we've got an input from the Public Safety Committee, whatever committees that might deal with an item of this nature. So, that's where Oliver Jenkins stands. There may be a lot more to the story. I just don't have it.
Yeah, and I'll say, you know, I am not opposed to a postponement if we need some more discussion on it. However, you know, what I do know is that there used to be a requirement of six-man crews. The crews were reduced to two a couple of years ago. And really, my knowledge on trains really comes just from the sense of public safety. There's a lot of train tracks that won't run through my district, right by a lot of neighborhoods in my district, and I get a lot of, you know, questions and concerns from people that live right near the train tracks. And so, you know, this is more of a effort to encourage the greatest respect to public safety that can be provided by those who are making a decision on who, how many people are manning the crews. So, that's the intent, and like I say, I'm not opposed to a postponement, but certainly that's the intent of the resolution, is to be asking for the greatest consideration to the public safety of the citizens of the city of Shreveport as possible by asking that these crews be more than one person, so that there's some sort of a backup.
Okay. Well, then, I'd like to make a substitute motion to send it to the Public Safety Committee for discussion. At least then there'll be some overture to whoever else is involved that actually has experience in this, and I don't know if a particular area of the city does or not. So, that's my substitute motion at this point, to put in front of us. If it's a public safety issue, it needs to go there first, is my argument.
And I've got Councilman Flurry and Bradford.
Mr. Chairman, just wanted to, I agree with Councilman Jenkins. It needs to go to public safety. But just for the matter of the record, the railroads are the largest and the strongest lobbyists in Baton Rouge, and they went down there and knocked off the caboose, and you see a little red light now. Yesterday, in California, we had a major train derailment, and we had a full staff on that train. If you put one man on that train going to Soto Parish not long ago, last year, maybe before, a man took a rifle and shot the man on the train. It's a safety issue. How are we going to control a runaway train? And so, I think the proper response would be to send this to public safety so that we can educate Councilman Jenkins.
Maybe I'm thinking we need to have 10 people on that train.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can't educate those that are uneducable.
But that's fair.
That's a motion to postpone and to refer.
The motion before us right now is to postpone and send to public safety.
And that motion was seconded by-
Yeah. Motion by Councilman Jenkins, second by Councilman Corbin, and we had a request to speak from Councilman Bradford.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I have no problem with the referral either, but you got the information that it was going to reduce it to one-man crew from this locomotive engineering group. Is that just through Shreveport or just?
Straight line.
But I mean, but our action can only affect coming through Shreveport. Is that right?
Well, this is our encouragement. I mean, this isn't a change to ordinances requiring that they're not able to-
This is support of their position.
This is we're resolving to agree with them, that we think it's good that they have more than one person with it.
Well, you know, I do know that, I know people who work on the railroad, several people, matter of fact, and I know that, just like any other big business, you know, reducing human resources helps save money. They have went to a lot of automation, a lot of with the technology now. They control a lot of their engines, a lot of their apparatus through the technology. But I mean, it seems just a logical assumption that, you know, one man on a train is dangerous, is inadequate. I mean, I just don't see how we can even, even though we gather all the information we want, but there was an incident, I don't remember, up in, I guess it was Virginia, somewhere, a couple of weeks ago, where train derailed and just went all over the place. You know, people, things happen. So, this is a practical matter. I just don't see how we could not support that they need to have more than one person on a train. I just don't see the logic behind saying one man on a train, something happens, who controls the train? Even with technology and automation, I still think there need to be a human body on that train to help control an emergency situation.
So, thank you so much for those comments. I see no more requests to speak right now, so I guess we'll call for the vote. Again, what we have before us right now is a substitute motion to send, to postpone this and send it to the Public Safety Committee.
Educate all.
Educate all. Let's make sure it's in the right-
And that is a 4-3 vote. Motion passes.
Chairman, we're now under regular agenda legislation. Resolutions on second reading and final passage. Resolution number 22 declares certain city property to be surplus-
So moved.
This needs to be postponed, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to postpone. Second. Will we postpone? The James Burton Foundation donation, it needs to be moved up.
Okay, gotcha.
That was motion by the Chair, second by Councilman Bradford. And that is a unanimous passage.
Resolution 26 suspends the effects of certain provisions of Chapter 10 and Chapter 106 of the Code on Saturday, April the 18th, 2015, Saturday, May the 23rd, 2015, Saturday, August the 8th, 2015, Saturday, September the 19th, 2015, Saturday, September the 26th, 2015, Sunday, September the 27th, 2015, and Tuesday, November the 3rd, 2015, in connection with the fundraising efforts by the Shreveport Moose Lodge, number 2239.
So moved.
Second.
I have a question on this. Normally, we get one at a time before, like-
What's that?
A little history here, and I may be mistaken. Previous years, we did it one at a time as the way we did it.
And that's similar to my question, is that, you know, I recall last year, there was an event that they wanted to do at Mount St. Vincent, where there was that open-air market, and they wanted to see if they could have wine tasting there. And the reason that they weren't able to is that, you know, we can do these occasional suspensions from time to time, but if you're planning to suspend multiple times in a row, it sort of defeats the intent. Is that, am I thinking differently about it?
I do remember that situation, and I think that is certainly consideration for the council. I think in the past, I've discussed this with some MPC staff members, and the way to resolve it so that they would be legal to have the drinking would be to get a special exception use that has a site plan that allows these activities, including outdoors. The ordinance allows the outdoor drinking when it's approved by special exception use. My understanding is that they have been told that, that they haven't done it or couldn't get the authorization to do it from the board or something to that effect.
Okay. Now, did the Elks Club also go through this last year, and there was something that prevented them from getting? What, Mike, do you remember this whole discussion?
It's funny.
A different group, or it might have been the same group, applied for this, went along this reasoning of this zoning change, and for some reason, I don't remember, that they could not get the zoning change because they didn't fit certain requirements, and I don't know if it was a proximity issue or if it was, I remember this whole discussion.
I think there is a daycare for something close to this use.
To this one?
Yeah. But when he came in with this, he had a whole long list. He must have had 50 dates on there. And I said, when this came up last year, I think that we advised you to go to the MPC and get the permission there that's needed. And so, I took him over to the MPC, and I left him there. And then later, Tanya came back and said, he still wants to do it. And I said, well, what about the MPC? He said, well, they haven't gotten the permission that they need from some state or whatever part of the Moose Lodge to apply. And so, we put this on the agenda for all of the tournaments, not all of the dates where they're going to be playing horseshoes, but for the tournaments.
Okay. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
My motion was in consideration of what we did for Bear Lounge, I think, a couple of weeks ago, in regards to their fundraising. But I thought about these multiple dates, and I think we may be, we may be in error in approving these multiple dates for this reason. But there's an incident on April the 18th. The gentleman, you know, sort of explained that, that if there's an incident on the 18th, we've already approved the 23rd. So, I think we'd be wise and prudent if we was to reconsider approving all the dates and went individual dates per occurrence. I don't know about the gattuses of going through the MPC. I think, I think we didn't do that. We didn't do that with the previous one. So, I'm just thinking that we'll just approve the one for the 18th. I know they need to plan, they need to plan their dates. I understand that. But I do think that if something happens on the 18th, that, an incident that may concern us, we do not need to give them a rubber stamp to go ahead and continue if there's something that we need to consider as a reason why we should not give them the second date.
Sir, you-
Chairman.
Yes.
If it's a consensus that you want to do it one date at a time, I think there is time for you to postpone this and let us prepare an amendment and then come back and adopt it with just one date.
I'll make a motion to postpone.
Second.
Chairman, I would also suggest that possibly, if this is, would meet with what the council wants to do, rather than having to do numerous resolutions, we could possibly word it so that they have approval for these dates, but in the event there is any violation of the alcoholic beverage law or something like that, then the resolution no longer applies. If you wanted us to consider writing that one.
I think it should be conditional on complying with the intent of this law.
So, we're working on amendment-
Sure.
-related to that.
And Councilman Corbin had a request to speak as well.
I just wondered if it may be beneficial for us to skip over this. I know there's nobody in the room from MPC right now. If we need Mr. Sweeney or staff member to come down and answer any questions, and we come back and take this up later in the meeting, that would be beneficial. If not, that's, I mean, that's fine.
I think since we have a motion to postpone on the table, I mean, that gives us an opportunity to make sure that they have, they can provide input on it, so.
I'm almost sure there was some issue with the Elks as well in a similar deal. I think so.
Yeah.
Because I remember being, and that's the only one I can think of that's in my district, so that's why.
We don't remember that, but we'll look for it.
Okay. I just need a vote from Councilman Bowman. All right, and we have got unanimous approval.
We're now into Resolution 29. It authorizes the mayor to execute an original agreement and lighting maintenance agreement between the city of Shreveport and the Department of Transportation and Development.
So moved by Councilman Flurry.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Flurry and second by Councilwoman Lynch. Councilman Flurry, it didn't register yet.
So enthusiastic.
And that is a unanimous approval.
Mr. Chairman, under introduction of resolutions, we added one that can be introduced at this time. It's Resolution number 32, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the Second Amendment and related Medicaid Supplemental Cooperative Endeavor Agreement with the Louisiana Avalanche Alliance and other public entities.
And the motion by the Chair, second by Councilman Corbin. And that passes unanimously.
That was for introduction. That was for introduction. Introduction of ordinances, we have none. Ordinances on second reading and final passage. Ordinance number 10. It amends the 2015 capital improvements budget. This is to establish and appropriate funds for nine new airport projects.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Corbin, second by Councilwoman Lynch. And that passes unanimously.
Ordinance number 11 amends the 2015 airports enterprise fund budget. This is to adjust funds within the airport's budget, $410,000, I believe, for a capital project.
So moved.
Second. I got a motion from Councilwoman Lynch, seconded by Councilman Flurry. Please cast your votes.
Thank you, Chair.
And it looks like they're all in. And we've got unanimous approval.
Ordinance number 12 amends the 2015 general fund budget. This is SPAR budget, and I believe it's internal changes within the SPAR.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by the Chair, second by Councilman Corbin. Looks like Flurry, Councilman Flurry. Somehow, we still have Oliver voting yes, and I know that he was not sitting up.
Yeah, he gave the thumbs up.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we logged it in that way.
Barbara Norton.
Good.
You're doing Barbara Norton.
Okay. Okay, so that was unanimously approved, and now we're at ordinance 14?
Ordinance 13.
13.
Amends the 2015 downtown entertainment, economic development, special revenue fund budget.
And so moved.
Second.
It's seconded by Mr. Bradford.
Yeah, that was motion by the Chair, second by Councilman Bradford. And.
I'm not going to.
Bradford, it looks like it didn't. Okay, that's unanimously approved.
Ordinance number 14 amends the 2015 budget for the River Fund.
And actually, for ordinance number 14 and 15, I'm going to make a motion to withdraw the two of those.
Second.
And to give a little background, my reasoning is, these, this is a very important organization and a function that they provide, but in putting these on the agenda and sort of advocating for it, I came into contact with a private entity who was willing to make this contribution so that the city did not have to. So, we are withdrawing these, and a thank you to the private citizens who stepped forward from our philanthropic community to cover this cost.
Definitely get those names out.
That was seconded by Councilman Corbin.
That was good stuff, Jeff. Very well done.
Well, we thank the, those people that stepped forward to do it, and I don't know if they want their names out there or not, but, but they are good citizens.
Mr. Chairman, those are all of the items on the regular agenda. I'm not aware of any item on the table agenda that is to be removed.
I'm not aware of any either.
Under appeals, Mr. Chairman, if we are at that point?
I believe we are.
Yesterday, we had about eight items, eight property standard cases that we were supposed to review. We did not meet yesterday, so it would be appropriate to move, to postpone those items until March 9th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Flurry, to postpone those items on the property standards appeals that were, that were originally scheduled to have been heard at yesterday's administrative conference meeting. And that is unanimously adopted.
Chairman, I'm not aware of any other appeals at this time.
Look about the ABO appeal.
Yeah, I see one there.
Orange.
That's to be taken up March 9th. So, we have no other appeals there. Are there any reports from officers, boards, or committees? Seeing none. Is there a clerk's report?
Yes, sir. We have a special meeting that has been called immediately after this meeting, for the purpose of going into executive session to discuss two items. There are three items that are on the agenda, but two items will be discussed. One is Rod Demery versus Willie Shaw, the ex, the second one is Amy Blotsom versus Shreveport. And on the circle K will not be discussed.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. And then, let's see, is there a motion for the council to resolve it, something in the committee of the whole?
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Lynch, second by Councilman Corbin for the, to go into the committee of the whole.
Send me to approve the February 10th minutes, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Well, as soon as we get that last vote, that's a unanimous approval. And now, we have a motion from Councilman Corbin, seconded by the Chair, for approval of the minutes of the, of February 10th. And that's unanimously approved. And let's see now, it looks like the Ms. Mayor is doing some individual communicating, so we can skip this portion. I don't mean to interrupt you all. Actually, I was just going to ask if you all have anything that you want to add at this point, and under the committee of the whole.
Nothing.
All right, I'm sorry.
Apologize for the sidebar.
No problem. Didn't mean to interrupt what I'm sure was a productive conversation. Sorry. Does any member of the council have any communications at this point in time? Councilman Flurry.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be brief here. I just want to ask the question this afternoon before the citizens of Shreveport, and all I want to say is Comcast. What a track record. 60 days, that's all I've been bombarded by, is Comcast service, billing and service. And I hope this council will have some dialogue coming forth soon about what we can do to try to help Comcast reach a better level of service. I asked the question this afternoon to our city attorney, and just to think along the lines, what recourse do we have, and what about a contract renewal? Where are we at? Mr. Chairman, I would hope about some type of meeting would be forthcoming to discuss the poor performance of Comcast. Citizens are not satisfied, and this issue certainly needs to be addressed, and I hope this council will do something about that in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Councilman Flurry. We, actually, we're just having a conversation about that right, right before the meeting, so look forward to following up on that. And in my request to speak, next I have Councilman Bradford, and that'll be followed by Councilman Bowman.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Jim. Is the chief here? Still here? Police Chief Shaw?
Chief Shaw? We'll get it for you.
He has ESP.
Sorry?
He has ESP.
Yeah, I think you got something. You're fair. How you doing?
Good, good, good.
Listen, let me, again, congratulate you on the report you made to the council last, last meeting.
Thank you.
As well as the, the coverage we got in the newspaper. I think a lot of citizens really, really impressed with, with the police department.
Thank you.
But Chief, I need to, I need to ask you, this is a concern of mine. Following our meeting the last 10 days or two weeks, there were two of the officers that was, that was arrested. How do you, how do you view that? What?
These are very unfortunate sets of circumstances. The police department is a microcosm of the bigger society, and the same thing you have in the general public, you're going to have in the police department. These are all unfortunate situations. We would hope that we wouldn't have to arrest our own, but nobody is above the law. And when you violate these laws, we're going to enforce those laws on you equally as we would anyone else. To say anything more is to get into personnel stuff. We don't expect these, these kinds of things to happen, but when they do, we're at ugly heads. We're going to deal with them.
Is part, is part of the screening process, is psychological evaluation still a part of that?
Absolutely. And if I had the easy button or the magic one, I'd pick perfect people with no problems, but we do all the testing and screening imaginable, but some still get through. And people change in time, but again, it's just a very unfortunate set of circumstances, and we just have to deal with them as they pop up.
Thank you. I, again, I was just concerned that I, you know, we, you know, it's reflective upon all of us when those type of things happen, and I appreciate you addressing it immediately.
It is embarrassing, to say the least, but we were going to take the appropriate steps, and we're always trying to better ourselves and improve. And sometimes, in doing those things, people have to find new things to do.
Overall, in your estimation, what's the, what's the attitude, the climate, the morale around the police department at this time?
It fluctuates, up and down. It, you know, for the most part, I hear people sometimes say morale is low, but when you say morale is low, and you got a 39-year crime load, you have to weigh that. Crime is, that been as low in 39 years, then if you say morale is low, well, God, I love low morale. But, you know, so I, I don't think it's low. You just have a handful of folk that may be just going off for one reason or another. Again, we're in a position where we have chains of command, and we can't allow people to do what they want, when they want to do it, and how they want to do it, because when you do that, you end up with chaos. You have situations that, that are happening in other places that don't happen here, based on the supervision that we have in place.
But you feel real comfortable with your, with your, with your upper management?
Absolutely.
Captains you?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that.
All right. Councilman, Councilman Bowman is next.
I didn't, I guess earlier with the confusion with the button pushing or whatever, I didn't get a chance to speak on how I wanted to, or say what I needed to say. Would it be okay if I called Mr. William Bradford up?
Sure.
Good afternoon to the members of the council.
Good afternoon. Quickly, I just, I'm excited about the appointment. We need to be our city attorney, first of all.
Thank you, Councilman.
If I can go back over the words that were eloquently done by Councilman Bradford. I think you're a very smart and intelligent young man. And I have just one question.
Yes.
You think you can do the job?
I know I can do the job, Councilman. I appreciate the opportunity, and look forward to serving you, as well as the mayor, in my capacity as city attorney.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
That's what I had. Thank you. Look forward to working with you, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman.
And Councilwoman Lynch is next to speak, and I believe she just asked if the other two, if Julie and Zelda.
I just want to make sure that the public has an opportunity. I mean, there's been a lot of talk back and forth today about it, but just to know who the other two attorneys are.
Yes, Council.
I mean, I know they know Julie, but just in a new role.
Members, I'd like to introduce to you Ms. Zelda Tucker. She is a very experienced litigator, one of the best lawyers I've ever had the opportunity to work with in the City of Shreveport. She has countless moments, I won't say years, of experience and knowledge in the area of litigation, as well as municipal relations as well. Again, I'll introduce her as Deputy City Attorney, and Ms. Julie Glass, who I think you've served with for several years as well. Deputy City Attorney Julie Glass is a wonderful asset to the City Attorney's Office, and I look forward to working with them both. If they'd like to have expressions or to say a word, I'd more than welcome anything from them.
I notice you got two women Deputy City Attorneys. Make you look good.
Well, we are an equal opportunity employer, so.
I have nothing to say.
Well, Zelda's a few words, but she is one of the best litigators you will ever see in court. I promise you that. Julie?
Well, I'm just happy to be able to be of service, to help our office move forward. I have been here a long time, and I don't know everything, but I'm, I'm glad to be able to, you know, lend assistance. Anything I can do on either side to help, I will do that.
Don't believe her when she says she doesn't know everything.
I was about to say. I think I proved that during the meeting today. I think we'll do an excellent job. It's a good cross-section of individuals that you have. I have done litigation for the City Attorney's Office since 1990, and I have been practicing attorney since 1986, and I have been a litigator since 1987. And I do primarily, actually, I only do insurance defense. So, I represent insurance companies and other municipalities, other than the City of Shreveport. So, I think that experience coming in will really assist the City of Shreveport in getting some of the litigation issues that we have now, that I know a lot of you are concerned with. We're going to address some of those issues and try to bring some of that back in-house, and try to get a better handle on our litigation department. So, I look forward to assisting.
And one other thing, council members, I do want to say this, that I appreciate the mayor's appointment of me, and I appreciate your confirmation of me, and as a professional, I will work with each and every one of you to make sure that we provide competent, adequate legal services for you. This is only a, I know Councilman Corbin and Councilman Bradford may have had some concern with the restructuring. Again, this is an opportunity for us to work together to make you more efficient citizen, City of Shreveport, and to help each individual that is reliant upon our services move forward and progress throughout the next tenure, and the next tenure, and the next tenure after that. So, we're ready to serve you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Councilman Jenkins?
Not sure what's.
Maybe, maybe.
It may have been lingering out there for a while. It could have been, back at the train station. I mean, I can't even remember what I would have put.
My whole thing that tells me what buttons I'm pushing keeps popping off, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure that I've been there recently.
Okay. I see no more additional requests to speak from council members. If that is the case, then we'll move on to public comments, and I do have a couple of public comment requests here. We'll start with Mr. Craig Lee.
Good afternoon. Now, today I was scheduled before the great ice storm and snowstorm to give a presentation on the Fair Share stuff. We'll say that for the next meeting, but I have, since this is our week for our C.C. Antoine Black History Event, I want to give this to the council. On Saturday, we're preparing for our 7th Annual C.C. Antoine Black History Celebration. I'm quite sure all of you, and by the way, I'm 1035 Eustace Street, Craig Lee. On Sunday, in the Shreveport Times, John Prime did a phenomenal job, if you didn't see this in the live section. I've worked with Bonnie Moore for some years now, as we have been focused on cultivating Shreveport's cultural tourism industry, and now with the opportunity to do the Choice Communities Grant, our focus is on telling our story as relates to C.C. Antoine, which happens to be in Councilman Bradford's District A district. As we compete for these grant dollars from the federal government, we have to be able to tell our own story. I had a good meeting this past week with the Historic Preservation Committee, and they are dedicated to telling our story. That's really what has held Shreveport back, the unwillingness to actually tell our story, because some of our story is bad, some of our story is good. You got to be able to tell the full story and be able to move towards cultural diversity. The greatest story that we can tell about this city is about this great guy, who is actually the founder of this city. The question was asked before, Craig, why do you say that C.C. Antoine is the founder of the city? I say because he is, because Henry Miller Shreve cleared up the log jam, and he got ghosted and went to St. Louis. He never even lived here. The campsite that he founded became a town, Shreve's town, and in 1871, this phenomenal black man wrote the city's charter, and that's how the town of Shreve became Shreveport. If it were not for Councilman Bowman's mother and Mr. David Cox in their fight to get us funding, and former cattle parish commissioner Lynch helping us get our funding back in 2012, the second phase of this, which is the birthday celebration, would not take shape. I have four councilmen. I have for Councilman Bowman, Bradford, and Flurry, because the rest of you got these, and I have this for Mayor Tyler. He's from President of the United States. Certificate, technology, C.C. Antoine.
Craig, do you know about how long you need?
About three more minutes.
Yeah, motion to extend.
Uh, these certificates were awarded, I gave the councilmen last year and the cattle parish commissioners their copies. But these are certificates that were awarded to three phenomenal veterans, C.C. Antoine, Felix Antoine, and his father, Petra Antoine. Both C.C. and Felix fought in the Civil War. They actually organized the First Union Black Army Regiment in the Union Army. And their father fought in the War of 1812. This is a part of a critical story that we are here to tell and also basically bring life to the Choice Communities Grant as it relates to the four-block area that you'll see from the corner of Myland and Sycamore, Sycamore at Allen, Allen at Pier, and Pier at Myland, that block that we're affectionately calling C.C. Antoine Square. And that particular piece that involves C.C. Antoine Park, Memorial Park, we've already leveraged the C.C. Antoine Masonic Lodge, they're on board. And then we definitely have his family. As a matter of fact, as we invite you guys to come out this weekend, May 1st of this year, his oldest living relative, his great-granddaughter, Antoinette Epps Smith, she'll be 99 years old, so we're gonna be bringing her birthday in and we're gonna do up his birthday in September real large. And I wanted to basically bring this to you all's attention, because this is the piece that we have to tell the story that now helps us to create this Choice Communities and that becomes a prototype as to how we do this, not only here in Allen, Del Lake Side, but also in Queensborough and other areas. And now Shreveport can really embrace cultural diversity and move forward on that particular level. So I thank you guys for that.
Thank you so much, Craig, for keeping the story and legacy of Mr. Antoine alive to people who may not be as familiar with all the great contributions of C.C. Antoine has made to our community.
One thing, I noticed in Mr. Prime's article that he was a Republican, C.C. Antoine. I didn't know that, that was news to me.
I believe, I believe back in the day, the, the party's stances on some important issues may have been a little different than they are considered today.
No, I'm not sure that that's true. I'm not gonna let you off the hook on that that easily.
It's a point for discussion, just to...
I'm not sure that that's true, but I was surprised.
Talk about sometime. Let's see, uh, my final request to speak comes from Reverend Mays.
Pastor Mays, 335 East Azalea, Shreveport, Louisiana. Thank you for your service. God bless to all of you council members. Something that I have been speaking out on for quite some time, ever since the, um, the shooting death of Brother Marquis Huspik almost 13 years ago. I will continue to stand and speak on that which is right, because right doesn't change unless people change it. So the reason I'm here on today is that I, I found in some information from previous year in July of the 2nd of 2012, where I had filed a petition to Internal Affairs to look into the conduct of a detective. I also sent you all some recent information that we're gonna allow the process to, to do what the process do. And that's what we encourage everybody to do, to let the process do what it do. But there been a spike in killings once again. I have been talking about this, that we need a citizen review panel. We are not saying that all police officers are bad, but we are saying those that are needs to be gone. And so I came before you again today. I will come before you continuously until there's some sensitivity training, until there are also some of these officers that's using excessive force. We think as a committee that pulling a gun should not be the first choice, but the last choice. That's what I think. Not long ago, just on Thursday, there was a big meeting with the sheriff and DA and others over there in Bogey concerning some matters and some procedures that we all can do to help this city to be a better city. Some have asked me, Pastor Mays, why do you keep fighting for this, this issue? Well, those who do nothing bring shame to all of us. And I will keep fighting and I will keep coming until this city treat every individual person as a person. Until we decide as a race of people that we are one city, that we care about each other. So I'm gonna keep coming. I sent information over to our newest mayor office when Hazel Beer was in office and all the other mayors that done come along, I will not stop. Because injustice anywhere to me is still a threat to justice everywhere. I believe that. And on the spirit of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., my time is about up, in this Black History Month, Dr. King made it plain for all of us that we should not judge anyone by the color of their skin, but by the contents of their character. I believe in the Constitution. I believe in the Bill of Rights. I believe in the Constitution because it says, "We hold these truths to be self-evident that all men are created equal." And I don't think it's right, my brothers, when one of our other brothers gets shot 15, 13, 14 times. I don't feel it's right when, when a man by the name of Dexter Christmas, who served this country as an Iraq vet for pulling off his shirt, get tasered to death. I just don't think it's right. So that's why I'm gonna keep coming. And I'm gonna keep coming until justice still pours down like water and righteousness still like a mighty stream. I'm gonna keep coming. Because justice for all or justice for none, I still believe that. I still believe that we are one community. My time is up and I appreciate you all very much. I still believe that we need to still operate as one city, loving everybody. And when I'm continuing to see families of mothers that I'm having to go before and pray for and families that are crying because my son is dead, he doesn't have a voice. So somebody gotta be that voice. So to all my, uh, all the people that stopped on the side of the road, say Pastor Mays, thank you. Keep doing what you're doing. Because we are one city and we are better together. Thank you, God bless.
Thank you, Pastor Mays. Um, and those are all the requests I have for public comments today. And before I do the adjournment, I do want to remind everybody, we have the, this executive session afterwards to discuss those two court cases. So what we'll do is we'll call this meeting to adjournment and then we'll immediately reconvene that meeting. So I just want to give everybody a reminder of that. So if there's no objection, the committee rises and reports and this meeting is adjourned. And now I would like to call to order the city council meeting, uh, for the special meeting of the city council for February 24, 2015. If we could do a roll call.
Chairman. Chairman, all of the members of the city council are present.
Correct, for the minute. And, um, let's see, so we do need to give an offer for public comments first, right?
Yes.
Mr. Bradford, did you have a question right now or?
My, I was, I was wondering who was the part of the executive session. The councilman said we're gonna move into another room.
We are and, um, and the, the last item that we do need to do is provide an opportunity, if there is anybody in the public that would like to make public comments regarding what is on our agenda today, this is their opportunity to do that. I've not, I've not had any requests to speak, so what we'll do now is...
Before everybody leaves, we need a motion to go into executive session to receive information relative to the following. Number one, Rod Demery versus Willie Shaw, AL, document number 578945, First Judicial District Court. And Amy Bloxum versus City of Shreveport, AL, document number 71,00608, 42nd Judicial District Court, Soto Parish.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Jenkins.
Second.
By Councilman Corbin and we're gonna need a handbook. And that's...
Is that a question, Mr. Chairman? That was unanimous.
That was unanimous.